I'd like to call our meeting to order. Tonight is Tuesday, September 5th. This is our regular council meeting for the month. For the record, the day is Tuesday, September 5th, and the time is 7:00 PM. Councilman Larry Taylor is not here, on his way, he's up the street. He should be here in just a few minutes. We'll go along with some preliminaries till he arrives. The first item we've got to consider are the approval of the minutes, of which we've got six sections, of which four go back to our very voluminous budget meetings. Does the Chair hear a meeting, uh, most of these minutes be approved in a written order of corrections?
Mayor Street, we're missing the April 20th budget meeting minutes.
April 20?
Mm-hmm. That's when we met, at nine o'clock at Town Hall. It was an all-day session.
Yeah, they're probably still under production. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Manager?
That, that is the case. If you recall, that was an eight-hour work session, and our clerks have been working diligently on preparing those, but I think it's great that we got six, uh, six sets of minutes before us tonight.
Yeah.
Well, for instance, February, you know, when we had a February 24th meeting, budget meeting.
Right.
Our next meeting, I think, was the 31st of March.
Right.
It would have been nice to have had those budget meetings minutes for that next budget meeting. Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's the important thing about minutes, having them in a timely manner.
Minutes are supposed to be timely.
Instead, we get 92 pages of minutes.
Well.
At one time, to approve.
And, and as you recall, we also discussed adding an additional position to that department this year to address this, among other issues.
But I mean...
The Chair is still waiting for a motion to approve the minutes, so we'll have discussion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
Okay, if it's been moved and seconded, then we approve the minutes. Now is our discussion.
We need our minutes in a more timely fashion. This happened last year, and I thought it might be improved this year.
Well, we're up to last week's meeting minutes here. Okay. Is there further discussion? All in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. The minutes are approved. Okay, we have a number of items for consideration tonight, which we'll try to move as quickly as possible, because some of these things are just sort of perfunctory. Uh, the first item we got, though, is a very happy thing, is the recognition of Sergeant Stephen Glover for receiving his advanced law enforcement certification, which is quite complicated to get such a thing, and I have the document here, and I'd like to ask George Bottoms if he would come forward with Steve and his wife, and anybody else you want to bring with you.
Joey Corbin.
Joey, yeah, the whole smear, bring everybody. And we'll, we'll present this sheepskin to him. Go with me, Hank.
Yes, sir.
We have all this stuff based back to 1975. Passes with a little piece of legislation on 17Z. We have a training standard, the kind of standardized training everybody, which I was part of the training commission at that time. And we wrote all this stuff up, and it greatly improved, and it's so much better now, and I'm much happier than I was. So here's your certificate, sir. Sure. There's the glove. Congratulations. You look very good at constancy. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Opportunity. Thanks, Stephen. Okay, the next item is a presentation of the Little Free Library by Emma Kahoon. Emma, would you come forward, dear? Okay. Have you state your name and address for the record? Can we bring it down to you?
Um, my name is Emma Kahoon. Um, 611 Western Avenue.
Can we take that thing out? Yeah, there we go, there we go.
Um, I wanted to, um, ask if you would let me do my little library. Um, because I saw somewhere my grandmother lived in Maryland. And what do you do when you go to, what, in free libraries? What, what do you do with them? Um, you grab books, like, you don't have to, like, pay anything for them. Um, you could put them back. Um, and I wanted to put them, um, by the church, by the town hall, and by the, by the, um, park. How are you going to pay for your libraries? Um, my grandparents and family are going to loan me some money.
Emma has a letter that she's prepared, that she's going to send out to family and friends, and our church family, and get people to help her to fund her project.
Okay, very good.
Okay. You have anything else you want to add, Emma?
Counsel, do I have any questions?
Does anybody have any question for her? Ask one.
Emma, how much do you anticipate this project's going to cost you?
Um, so do you want to show me the box? Emma has picked out this box. Just hand it to Mr. Larry, he can pass it over to me.
Thank you.
So we plan to order the boxes. They're easier than building, and, and more cost-efficient. When you order the box, each box is $289, and that comes with the plaque. Each, each box has to have a free little library plaque on it, that it goes along with Emma's charter, that she plans to create. And the, the box, when you order it, it comes with the plaque attached, which, they're normally $40 apiece, and it also comes with the first set of books to put in it. Although, do you want to tell them about your books you've collected? Um, I've been collecting books since Easter. So how many books do you have, do you know? Two crates? Two crates full.
Wow.
And then how, how are you going to maintain your books, Emma? You plan to check on your boxes and maintain the boxes, so they stay just like their original? So they don't dilapidate? You're going to maintain them, and you're going to what? Make sure there's books in them? Okay?
Have you checked with the planning department, see if there's any right-of-way issues where you're going to put these things?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Is that okay, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. If you give her the blessing, then we're okay with it. We also checked with the DOT, as many of these will be on their streets, and they say if it's not in the right-of-way, that they're okay with it.
Okay, good.
Is there one on Washington Street, or is it Hilliard, at the Methodist Church?
Um, she, I don't know if she's actually talked to the Methodist Church to get the location, but I would assume that it would be up and off of the sidewalk for safety purposes.
We would like to put it next to the playground, where the, where the preschoolers go in and out, so that way they would have access to it as they were coming to and from school. Which, so that's actually in the parking lot of the church.
Okay. Okay, what's the wish of the council? Need a motion?
Need a motion that will allow her to have her project.
Second.
Okay, if it's been moved and seconded, that we support Emma Kahoon's Little Free Libraries. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay. You're done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We're down to the fourth item, third item. A consideration of an application for a permit for a street event for the Nash County to request a whole food truck event on the fifth Fridays in 2017 and 2018. At our agenda meeting last Wednesday night, this was discussed with a public hearing, and there was no, no opposition from anybody. It looks like it's going to be like four times between now and 2018. Uh, the Chair here, most we approve this consideration.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the consideration. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? It is done. The item number D is consideration of ordinance to allow sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sundays at licensed premises, and we read the ordinance changes at our, at our planning meeting the other night, and there was some discussion for against it, but, uh, this issue has been spread all across the state, almost every, every municipality has approved it to this point. Does the Chair hear a motion, we approve this consideration?
Mayor Street, I move that we do not approve this ordinance.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, the motion fails, so we want to support. Is there an alternate motion?
Here, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, it's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Yes.
And there's a second, is there discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
No.
Is there opposition? Issue passes. Item number E, a consideration of a zoning request for property located at 29 Eastern Avenue from A-1 Agricultural to O-N-I Office Institutional. This property contains approximately 5.69 acres, as identified by Nash County Tax Parcel This was heard at our agenda meeting the other night, in a joint public hearing with the planning board, and the planning board recommended that it be approved for rezoning. Does the Chair hear a motion, we approve this consideration?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the consideration, is any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, item F is related to item E. A consideration of zoning request, 2017-02, request to rezone property located at 2122 Eastern Avenue from A-1 Agricultural to O-N-I Office Institutional. This property contains approximately 1.11 acres, as identified by Nash County Tax Parcel This, as the previous issue, was heard at our agenda meeting last Wednesday night. There's no opposition to it, and the planning board agreed to it unanimously. Does the Chair hear a motion, we approve this consideration?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the consideration, is any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Issue is resolved. Um, okay, the next item coming up can be related to G and I, was the presentation of certificate of sufficiency for petition, petition, I can't talk, petition for AP Number 201701, for property located at 29 Eastern Avenue. If you look at I, it's the same thing, for property located at 2122 Eastern Avenue. Our clerk has submitted certificates of sufficiency for these, and they are adequate. So, the Chair here motion, we approve this consideration?
Second.
Excuse me. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, it is all done for that. And the next item, of course, is a consideration of resolution, we'll fix a date for a public hearing on questions of annexation for the petitions for AP 2017-02, located at 2122 Eastern Avenue, which I think we've got set for our agenda meeting on September 27th, is correct. Okay, anyone having any trouble with that date? The Chair here motion, we approve that date for a public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve September 27th, for the, it's our regular agenda meeting for this hearing on annexation. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? According, it is done. Okay, item K is consideration of fee schedule amendments. Uh, the first one deals with our library, if you looked at this, they want to change the cost for color copies, uh, from 80 cents to 75 cents each. Part of the logic, of course, we'll still make money, that part of the logic, because people carry quarters and not nickels. And the other issue is to put a dollar a day fee on, on video games. That's not been coming back. Uh, does the Chair hear a motion, we approve this consideration?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we approve the consideration for the library fee. Uh, is there any discussion?
I have a question about the video games.
Yes, ma'am.
How many are we purchasing?
Uh, at the moment, I think four or five, and then I was just going to purchase one per month, to slowly build collection.
Okay, and it's to attract teenagers to come and use the library?
Other, other discussion? All in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, item number two deals with parks and recreation. If you look at your fee schedule over here, uh, actually, we, we're doing very little other than changing the language of what we're doing. We've got two sets of fee schedules, an old schedule and a new schedule. Hank, will you explain what we're doing with shifting it from?
Certainly. We have two different fee schedules presented, for clarity. One's an old schedule, what it is before tonight's meeting, and what, and the new one of what's being proposed. Uh, the only significant change on this fee schedule for parks and rec, um, of, of a dollar figure is adult athletics, the very first one on the new schedule. That's being changed to correspond with our youth athletics, which is a resident fee of free, and a non-resident fee of $10 for all sports. Currently, the way we're set up, we have adult programs listed by team for basketball, softball, and toy recreational softball. These are programs that we're not offering right now, haven't offered for a number of years, and with the fee structure the way they are, we're not in a position to be able to recruit and market programming in this way. So, we have a recommendation from our Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Director to make our adult athletics the same as youth athletics. The other changes are taking out the specifics on registrations, and season starts, and age groups, and leagues for our different youth sports, and just consolidating that down to just what the cost is for youth athletics in the, in the new table. So all of that is still the same, as far as cost, and the reason for that is due to the types of signups we have, we're not able to consistently say, this is the league name with this age group. A lot of times, we get different age groups in, and we have to adjust to which, which league it is, based on the age, based on the number of signups. So we want to make sure if we're going to put a fee schedule out there, that we're actually following it, so that we thought the best thing to do, since there is a lack of consistency, is to just do away with that particular language, and just have it listed as youth athletics. The other, the other facets are the same to the fee schedule, but the, but the department is now on a smaller table.
Okay, your comments? All in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
So Hank, all of this will be reworked?
It, it will be exactly what it is in the new section.
Okay.
So this one table here will replace the other two tables.
Right. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's done. All right, now we're down to number JKL, consideration of a resolution of favor of invoices. We've had a couple of errant things since we were last together. Uh, again, we read the same resolution. Says, whereas North Carolina general statutes require pre-audit be performed by the finance director before the town incurs an obligation, whereas general statutes state that failure to perform the pre-audit requirement makes the contract agreement or purchase order void, and whereas general statutes further provide if an officer or employee of a local unit incurs an obligation or pays out of causes to be paid out, any funds in violation of the pre-audited statute, he and the sureties on his official bond are liable for any sum so committed or dispersed. And whereas general statutes also provide if the finance director disapproves a billed invoice or other claim, the governing board may step in to provide payment, and now therefore bill ordained on behalf of, on behalf of the mayor and the town council, that through this resolution, the town council, the town or national town council, does hereby approve the following invoices for payment, and their three totaling $480.55. And we are further resolved that the copy of this resolution be spread on the permanent records of the town or national, adopted this 5th day of September 2017, with appropriate signatures and attestations. Uh, the first one to NAPA, and the second to Strickland Equipment Company, I understand, was shipping fees that came in after the fact. And the third one is a registration that got paid before requisition was written, which was, uh, requires some more supervision. Does the Chair hear a motion, we approve the bills?
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion?
So these fees for NAPA and for Stricklands, well, I did have a question prior to what you just read.
Okay, go.
It's the shipping fees only, and not for the purchase of that?
No, it's just freight of some kind.
What kind of shipping fee you got from NAPA to the town shop?
Uh, it would be, it would be, if a park was ordered specifically for town shop, and you had to get it in from some other source, that's, that's where the freight's at. It's not the freight from him to the shop.
Yeah, it was.
Freight from, on the park coming to him.
Yeah.
And you don't charge it on, you show it broken down, because that's what we did when we had parts business.
Two quarters of all, we got to pay a fee on. Maybe you could explain it to him later on, but go ahead.
Okay. Other discussion? All in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay. Okay, and now we're down to item M, consideration of budget amendments. The first one deals with increasing professional and contract services by $200, which covers money that was donated to us for the music series that we did not spend. Uh, you want to do these collectively?
I think you, we should explain each one, don't you? And then go on.
Okay, we can do that, as you go. Uh, who gave us that money?
I believe that's the Nash Arts Council grant.
Nash Arts Council grant?
That would be it.
And I don't know why it wasn't spent, but the money came in as a revenue, it has to be shown as it expended to her, so we went back over to contracted services, in case we hire another band somewhere down the road, so it'll, it'll go back into paying up for more music. Okay, the next one, uh, let's see, it's, it's a Hope Initiative money, we received $500 from, where did it go?
Nineteen thousand.
I'm sorry, $19,000. Uh, that money came to us in, in several forms. 10,000 of it came in one check from the UNC hospitals. Um, so all that's going in, that's all donated money according to Hope Initiative. And then item number eight, uh, was money we received from FEMA for Matthew-related projects, and that just moved on through fund balance into expenditures that we'll make it sometime.
Okay, that's $43,000, and that was used for?
Those funds have not been used. We, we received those monies during last fiscal year, and federal government requires us to spend those monies within a certain timeframe, which, which will require us to reappropriate that money into the current budget. So, we have, we have the money in hand, but it wasn't appropriated with the budget. So it requires a budget amendment to put it in the budget, so those funds can be spent to meet federal guidelines.
Okay, and those was to be spent on what?
Uh, well, I know Brian identified a couple of projects, maybe he can speak on the specifics.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we have to fix the slope at the sidewalk at Waffle House that got washed away, so we have to repair that. We have to repair our Greenway, which is basically just getting the silt out from the Washington Street to the First Bridge. We have to go down to Break Street and fix that drainage ditch that leads up to the lift station behind W. L. Green, and then if we have any money left over, we owe the park two picnic tables that got washed away. So that's where the money comes from, and it's already been...
Was the last item got washed away?
Two picnic tables at the Stony Creek Park.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So those are all things that we identified as problems for Matthew, and then they gave us the money in return. We have to perform those projects before this upcoming spring.
Did that go toward any cleanup after Matthew, because there were some areas that were...
But this, this money has not been spent, it was given to us to do those things.
Okay.
The, uh, the buyout applications around town, that's not any of this money, is it?
No, sir, that's something totally different.
Okay. Okay, does the Chair hear a motion, we approve these three budget items?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approve the budget items. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, and the other item is in the manager's report, which deals with moving money around as one line item, which he can do. Okay, Hank, your report, go ahead.
All right, I'll, I'll start by with the budget amendment. Budget amendment five deals with the 10-590 account, this is the Stormwater Department. $500 is moved, increase to materials and supplies, our 3300 line from 7400, our capital outlay equipment. We ended up not needing the full 200,000 to buy our leaf truck. Unfortunately, we were able to get a discount on that through a state contract Mr. Baines was able to find, and what we did was we pulled $500 away to help offset some of the costs for the tax bills this year, for the postage costs. Since Stormwater is a piece of what's on our tax bills, we have, the tax bill is a little different this year. Instead of being sent on a postcard, it's being sent on an actual letter. It includes the abhorrent taxes, the municipal service district, and the Stormwater fee. And we thought it made sense that, since Stormwater was part of the revenue for the tax bills, that the Stormwater Department be charged a percentage of the cost of the postage to mail up those bills. So that's what that $500 reflects. Um, the Stormwater Department is a little muddy this year, since it is a new department, and we're still trying to figure out what the full annual cost will be. You remember from our, our budget sessions, the only thing we put in is line items for Stormwater, were the personnel costs for one employee, and this capital outlay line to buy the leaf truck. So hopefully, in, in the next fiscal year, after we identified cost better, we can add in the operational cost for things like repairs and materials and supplies.
A third of that was contingency of the Stormwater.
Of the Stormwater revenue, but, but if you remember, that, that was just the heading we gave to it. The Stormwater contingency money was really money that was being put aside as capital reserve for a street sweeper, and for the purchase of a replacement leaf truck.
And for that employee. If it's for the one employee.
For the department, yeah.
Right.
Um, and, and other business, our finance department's been working very diligently up front. They've undertaken a lot of challenges in the past couple of weeks, being short-staffed. We have successfully been able to identify a person to fill our customer service representative position, and offer's been extended to them, so hopefully they'll be beginning their fulfillment in the next few weeks. We're still looking to fill the senior customer service position at this time, but it's something that we're working through, and I appreciate your patience while we work, work through that. Um, and the police department, upcoming, we have on September the 21st, our second annual fundraiser for the West, at West Ridge Grill for the Hope Initiative. That'll take place from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and on the 23rd of September, we're having the second annual recovery rally at Glover Park, to help support the Hope Initiative from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
What was that date again?
For which one?
The, the last one.
The last one is September the 23rd. This is the second annual rally for us. Um, as you know, we've also been working on the grant application, along with Pat's As you know, we've also been working on the grant application along with Patson McGee from Nash County for the Elm Street project. That has been submitted. The total cost of that grant was around $892,000. We, of course, don't know if we've received that grant, but the only match for us was the engineering cost to get this off the ground. So, once we hear that we've received it or did not receive it, you'll get an update.
Is that in addition to the 200,000 for the stormwater work under the jail?
That 200,000 will be part of that 892. So, the way that grant works, we work with the county on that grant. We are the official applicant, because they only wanted one applicant. But it's a project that benefits really us and Nash County. It includes that drains project under the jail. It also includes addressing issues with their parking lot. They've experienced several sinkholes that are attributed to Hurricane Matthew. So, we saw an opportunity to work together on something that was mutually beneficial.
Did the engineers ever decide how far that washout went up the hill? Last I heard, they were still looking.
The scope of the project starts at Austin Street, and then it heads towards Stony Creek along the Nash County side until you get to Body Street, and then eventually crosses the street to the other side and goes by their parking lot. There was a lot of question of the Richardson parking lot and how that factored into it, but we don't have any easements or rightaways on that property. So, that's why we're starting at the point we did, because that's totally in our control now.
So, this ditch in question, does it start west of Austin Street?
It starts on the county side of Austin Street. By Miles Glasgow's old building.
Okay.
And then it goes towards the creek.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, how much of it is the town's problem?
If it's the town's problem, ultimately, I think all of it's the town's problem. But the part that we identified in the actual stormwater drainage issue in our work sessions, it'd be between 200 and 250,000, depending on engineer estimates.
And that's the part on Elm Street, right behind the jail, going over to the parking lot and down to the creek.
But this is not a, the type of situation where Golden Leaf will say, we approved this part of the grant or that part. It's an all or nothing type of deal. So, this is what, this is the way we were encouraged to apply for it. And we've heard nothing but positive news up to this point, so.
But should we not get the grant? We are still on the hook for getting these repairs, right?
Well, we haven't obligated ourselves to do that at this time, but at some point, it'll be, it'll have to be done. It's our most expensive stormwater drains project we've identified, so.
But if we do that, we'll do only the part that's on town property. Because all the stuff in the parking lot he's talking about, that's not ours.
That's on county property.
Yeah.
That's right.
We still need to do it, but we're not on the hook that we have to do it. We're just have to.
Oh, the 892?
Right.
Now, of course, that'd be split between us and the county.
Okay.
But, you know, what we would have already identified is what we would be obligated towards. We're not doing anything that obligates us to do any more than we've already identified. But they're all related, they're all related expenditures, although there's two different governments that are going to be responsible for things on their side of the property line. So, it's not expanding our own responsibility. But at some point, if we do not receive this grant, it is something that we're gonna have to have serious discussions.
Have to look at, right.
Because it's, and it's not that the drainage itself is so expensive, it's the fact that we have to carry the road out to be able to access the issue.
Yeah.
So, under the jail is 200,000 or 250, which?
That's just it, but it's something I can't identify, because the engineer estimate was total for one thing, so we'd have to break that out to find out a cost for that one specific aspect of it. We had engineer costs on the whole project.
The whole thing.
Right. So, I'm estimating on that. And just like what we had at the work session, that was a very rough estimate from stocks engineering.
That was the 280 number, was it?
That's right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how it had in front of me, but it was in that ballpark, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, it's a massive project. Got other comments?
Um, I'll point out, you know, I got married on Sunday, and going along with that, I'm here tonight, but, but I do plan on taking a honeymoon in the next few days, so I plan on leaving on Friday, and I'll be gone through the next Sunday. So, I want y'all to know I'll be taking a cruise, so I'll be out of that for a few days.
Hold on, just where are you going, cruise?
Well, that's up in the air right now, because we planned this several months back, and unfortunately, we're supposed to be flying into Miami, so I don't know where that's going right now.
You might not want to go to Miami right now.
I may not.
You might not want to go to Miami.
So.
Might want to change that to Alaska.
We may have to make some plans, but that's what we've got. That's what we've got scheduled right now. And if you hadn't seen it already, Mr. Hassel brought with him a nice plaque that stocks engineering provided us that we could hang on the wall. Brian, you want to show that? It's a copy of the Nashville graphic from our groundbreaking of our drainage project, $2.6 million. This is part of the history of Nashville now.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Counsel comments? Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Raper, you still nervous? Or did you get over the nervousness?
It's too late now.
Okay, he was real nervous. He's all right now. First of all, I'd like to apologize for being late tonight. No excuse, Monday holiday kind of threw me off, and I'm sitting there at the house doing nothing. Thank you, Charles, for calling. It's good I didn't live two blocks down the street.
Glad you're here.
Apologize to the council and to the public for not being here on time, but the holiday just got me this time. I apologize. But other than that, no more comments.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, I'd like to compliment Steve Glover on his recognition and completing his course. I'd like to compliment Lou on the hard diligent work she put in getting the minutes that we have tonight, even though we may still be short some. We did, we did talk about hiring an assistant to her, and maybe it shows we do need the assistant.
Thank you. Mr. Henn?
Yes, I had a question about the distinguished budget award that you're working toward. What is that about?
Yeah, that is a, an award given out by the Government Financial Officers Association based out of Chicago. It is awarded annually based on meeting certain benchmarks and excellence in budget. And it's something that Nashville, as far as I can tell, has never received. It's given out annually. It's not one of these things that you apply for, like the top three or so get this award. It's more about do you meet a certain standard? From what I can recall, 28 local governments in North Carolina received the award last year. That's county, cities, and counties. But it's mostly larger agencies, but it really shows that your budget is an effective communications device, operations guide, financial document, and a strategic plan for the town. So, it's something that, you know, from a performance standpoint, I've tried to work towards since I've been here on the job. But it shows that it's a transparency piece to the town, that it shows where your resources are going. It's really meant so that the public can read the budget and have a clear understanding of how are my dollars, how are my tax dollars being spent? What are you using for it? I want to educate myself on how town government works. So, it's a complicated process. It's something I've really worked on myself with some help from the department heads on some of the narrative pieces of it here and there. It's not a small undertaking, but I think it's something that's worth undertaking for the town. I'd like to apply this year. If we don't get the award, my understanding is that next year is no cost to the town. So, I, my thinking is we'll probably not get it this year, because we haven't applied before and know all the things we're looking for. But there's a very complicated criteria guide to go through, 27 different ways you're scored with your budget document, so.
And what's the cost to the town?
Do we get to see the document before it's submitted?
I can make that arrange. That's my plan.
What's the deadline?
The deadline is 90 days after the budget's passed.
September 30.
It's coming up to the very end of September. And you can submit it online, so we can wait. We can wait till the last minute. My goal is to get as close to the award status you need to be, submit it, get some feedback on it, and then hopefully submit a successful document next year. But as you're, I gave you a full budget document last year detailing a lot of things beyond just the spreadsheets that we talked about in the work sessions. This is that same document, but even more expanded and detailed than that was last year. So, that's what we're talking about.
So, some of the things that you're submitting, we did not use during the budget process?
Those are things that wouldn't exist before you pass a budget. When you're, when you're doing budgets during a work session, you're doing things like revenue forecasting, projections, making estimations of what costs are gonna be, and discussing what things that departments are requesting. This is a very different process. This is almost retrospective. You pass your budget, now that you know in definite terms what you pass and adopted, this is a detailed explanation of, in graphic form and narrative form, what you actually have done. So, it's looking back, but it's taking all the work that we've done in the work sessions and laying it out in a way that a citizen can read it and understand what took place. Because as y'all know, just in work sessions, sometimes just seeing spreadsheets, we have to discuss what different things are. A citizen wouldn't be able to read that and be able to easily decipher what different things mean. This helps break that apart.
So, we do get to see it?
Absolutely.
You'll click us a copy before you click it away?
Absolutely.
Okay, that'd be good. Maybe you need to go and have a mutual reading.
We can do that.
Yeah, pretty fun. Okay. Other comments?
See that?
That's it. Okay, folks, you know, we got a hurricane coming at us of biblical proportions, and it's still telling what kind of.
We've got a hand raised out here, man.
I got what?
It's easy.
I've got what? Well, I can't see through the post.
It might be meant to be that way, so you won't throw anything at me.
You step out, step out behind the post and identify yourself.
I'm Gloria Smith.
Hi, Glory. Will you come to the podium please, so we can get you recorded?
I'll stand right here. It's an easy question. Under the items for consideration, talking about the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Right.
I see where we passed it tonight. When does that go into effect?
Well, according to the legislation, it goes into effect upon approval.
Okay, so immediately then?
It'll be immediate.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
What that means?
Okay. But anyways, I was saying, we got a hurricane coming at us. Nobody knows where it's gonna go, a disaster. But I'd advise everybody to stay in touch with all the warning services and get yourself equipped for it, because we don't know where it's gonna come. All of our emergency response people, though, are getting geared up for this thing, so we'll do what we have to do to get through this one. Congratulations on your wedding.
Thank you, ma'am.
It was a very lovely event, and I hope you have a nice cruise on nice calm water. Okay, thank you very much. All right, the Chair here motion we adjourn?
So made.
It's been moved and second, is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor indicate so by saying yes.